Carlos Hernandez, how are you, sir?
I'm doing well. How about you?
Man, I'm doing well. I'm doing well. Thank you for coming today. I know it's a schlep from Caldwell.
Oh, yeah, no, it's totally fine. Honestly, I thank you for for allowing me to be here. I really like what you do.
Oh, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Listen, you're running for city council of Caldwell.
I am.
And there are a lot of people running. Talk to me about why you're running and what you want to do.
Yeah, well, I I want to run. Well, I am running for city council because I believe that Caldwell is at a juncture right now where we need leadership who has experience in project management, understanding fiscal responsibility, and having a true sense of community brought back to Caldwell. There's a lot of strife right now from what I've seen and what I've experienced. And it's like, you know, let's let's get back to kind of being nice to our neighbors and having kindness. And I think that that speaks a lot of volumes. And so I think that there are a lot of people in Caldwell looking for that type of leadership. And I know I can definitely bring bring that.
Talk to me about this. Project management and fiscal responsibility.
Yeah.
Talk to me about fiscal responsibility. Where do you see potential improvements? Potentially like, what is that in Caldwell to you?
Yeah, you know, I think fiscal responsibility, it's kind of like an overarching thing.
Sure.
You know, you definitely have making sure that budgets are happening the way they're supposed to be happening. Revenues are coming in, making sure we're collecting all the taxes that we need to be collecting. And so it's really important that our citizens understand what's happening. And when it comes to fiscal responsibility, making sure that we're following GAAP, which is general accounting practices and, you know, GASP, which is requirements for accounting for governmental associations. And so it's really important that that the the public understands that, you know, that you can't just like take something from a URA fund and use it for
What's it? What's a URA fund?
So Urban Renewal Agency.
Oh, gotcha. Of course. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't just take money a lot for one thing and like dump it somewhere else.
Exactly. And I think that that's really important to help educate our citizens on that. And be like, hey, this is this is specifically for this. This is what we can use this for. And we're not hiding any money. Everything is online. I think Caldwell is doing an amazing job. They have a budget book that anyone can access online. And they can go through and literally see how much someone, how much a department is using when it comes to revenue, how much they're projected to spend for 2026. And so I think just having more transparency when it comes to that is really important. But yeah, I think fiscal responsibility is is definitely something I can help with. I'm getting my master's in business administration. And I work with numbers a lot. So it's definitely, it's definitely in my wheelhouse to be able to look at a look at a budget and be like, okay, this this kind of looks a little different. What's going on here? Can we can we have some reasoning behind these numbers?
Gotcha. A couple of things. Did you know that the State Controller's Office published a site called, I believe it's Transparent Idaho or Transparency Idaho? And you can go in and compare all of the expenses in Caldwell to Nampa, to Coeur d'Alene, to Twin Falls. Like, you can do all kinds. So you have this great access to numbers and transparency right there at the State Controller's Office. And again, if you want to compare your city to another, so you're like, hey, how come our police budget is X percent higher, X percent lower, or like, how is it like, you can figure out all of those things? And it's it's all right there at your fingertips if you want to do it.
Well, I think it's, as I said, it's really important for us to be like, hey, you know, citizens of Caldwell, these are some resources that the state has, that Caldwell has.
Right.
You know, bring your questions to us. We want to be able to answer. We want to be able to engage with you as to why we decided to do this or why we decided to do that. So I think it's really important. And and I think that those are amazing resources.
Yeah. The other thing that that I think is interesting, I mean, Idaho is obviously different than my former state in a lot of ways, including taxation, property tax, like all kinds of things. But one big problem that constantly came up in my former communities and state is money that was a self-elected tax that was sold for one purpose, like, hey, we're gonna have to charge you a little more for the children. It's gonna be for education.
Yes.
And then that money goes in and perhaps for even a year or two, it's slotted for education. But then it would go into the general fund. So the nature of like, no, no, no. In Caldwell, we have money that is slotted in very specific places for very specific things. And we're not, it's not like there's a there's a gentleman from that state as well that very much speaks out against the fire fire levy in the Star Middleton area. And he's a former firefighter from, you know, the state and was very much against it until he found out. It's like, no, no, no. Starr has a fire district.
Yeah.
The city he was working in would always say, hey, we need to run, guys, you need to tax yourself a little more so we can give money to the firefighters. And then people would agree. And then that money, instead of going to the firefighters, would go to whatever the city wanted. So they just use the firefighters as this like bleeding heart topic. And then, you know, so again, that's different, though, right? Like Idaho hits different than other states.
Yeah, I think it does. You know, I think that there are definitely ways in which I think funding for for education definitely needs to be at the height of it, right? City council doesn't really deal with a lot of that type of issue when it comes to educational funding. But I think it's important that we're listening to our citizens and we are, you know, making sure that we're advocating for them maybe on a state level, connecting with our local state legislatures, being like, hey, our our citizens are worried about schools. What are what are you doing to help advocate for them in Boise? Right? And I think that that's something that's really important because right now, you know, in Caldwell, your city council is basically the same as the state representative, right? The geographical area. And so it's like, okay, well, what are you advocating for? Because this is what we're hearing. We're hearing that, you know, their school, schools are not being funded as appropriately as they should, this, that, and the other. So what are you doing? How can we be a team? Because again, this is a state issue rather than a city issue.
Right.
And so, yeah, that collaboration, I think, is desperately needed to advocate for our citizens. And at the end of the day, that's what our job is, is to advocate for them in the best way we can.
Project management. Now, there are a couple of projects downtown that are very notable, right? Obviously, the parking meters, the hotel. Talk to me about these things.
Absolutely. I'm happy you brought that up. No.
You can't talk about Caldwell without talking about parking meters.
I know. Yeah. So I was recently appointed to the Downtown Parking Committee and we
Wait, you're on the committee? You're in the belly of the beast.
I'm in the belly of the beast, yes. But it's only recently.
Okay, okay, okay.
When you're online, I'm just saying, it's only recently. So we we had our first meeting a few months back. And we wanted to make sure we were hearing from everyone. So our first meeting, we kind of talked about what worked, what didn't work, the rollout of the parking meters, all that stuff. You know, and and it's really important for us to be able to get that foundation of where are we? And how are we going to move forward? And so we had sent out a survey. I think there was close to 300 people who participated in it. And they talked about everything. There was questions on when it would be best to have parking meters available, whether it was Friday, five to eight, Monday through Friday, five to seven, Monday through Saturday, you know, all that other stuff. And so I think that was one thing when it comes to the parking meters, that it seemed like there wasn't a lot of collaboration with the citizens.
Gotcha.
You know, I think you can have one or two forums when it comes to something small. But those parking meters affected everyone who attends anything downtown. And it's like, how are we going to make sure that, one, that doesn't happen again? But how are we going to engage with the citizens in the best way we can to find creative solutions? And I think that that's what it is. And so we, it was recently at the most recent council meeting that all of the council members approved that we are going to be in the downtown core area. Eight to five, Monday through Friday, it's going to be a two-hour limit or a three-hour limit, excuse me. And then outside of that, it's a four-hour limit. And so the difference between what it has always been, which is a three-hour limit, is that now we're able to actually implement it. And so they have the technology of an actual police officer or resource officer or
Sure.
Someone. They will actually be going down and doing
Like chalking tires or whatever.
Well, they don't do that anymore. But it's like, like a photograph, not a photograph, but like, they'll just scan it. And then it'll let you know, they'll do another two hours. Okay, this car has been here for over three hours or four hours.
Interesting.
Yeah. So it's not, it's not, they don't keep any of the information or anything. It's just making sure that people are able to be downtown in the hours. So, yeah, it's three hours. When it comes to the hotel, again, I think that I think time means everything. Right? And you have the debacle of the parking meters and then right after the hotel. I think that, again, collaboration with the citizens is the most important thing. You know, you have a lot of people in the community who would utilize that. And, you know, I think that, I'm not, I wasn't on council. I don't know what what the internal conversations were associated with that. But I think that a hotel is needed, right? In Caldwell, there's only two. And I know for me, my corporate, my company's corporate office is there. And we always have to come to Meridian or Nampa or Boise to have all of our conferences. None of our guys stay in Caldwell. It's like, okay, how do we make sure that the people visiting Caldwell, that the taxes and and all that revenue stays in Caldwell, right? But I think that the hotel, again, I just think that timing, the timing was off, honestly, and it could have been different.
That's a, your sentiment is what a lot of people have articulated as well.
Yeah.
I can't remember who said it, but they're like, listen, man, you got bad mojo. You got bad mojo from the parking meters. And then if if the hotel was a standalone thing, probably you're not going to have everybody happy about it.
Yeah.
You know, and and I think most people are like, yeah, communication could probably be better, you know, like, we don't, there are things that we're not privy to. This is fine. But it sounds like, man, the one-two punch.
It was a little rough. Yeah, it was a little rough. But, you know, I think that that there are spaces available. A lot of people listening will most likely be, okay, well, what about the 4H and, you know, the county fair and all this other stuff? I know that there is parking that's going to happen. It's just that it's gated right now because of construction to keep everyone safe, you know. So I think that there, there are definitely growing pains in Caldwell. And but at the end of the day, it's like, okay, what are we going to do? How are we going to make sure that Caldwell has a better future? How are we going to make sure that there's still vision and there's still hope, right? And it's like, okay, we know that this is going to happen, right? But how are we going to plan proactively? How are we going to make sure that we're communicating our ideas in a positive way and engaging with the citizens? And I think that that's really important. And I know that that's something I can do.
When you talk about a positive future, there are two notable examples of local government essentially crushing in my mind in recent times. I've interviewed all the people for Garden City. Everyone says 20 years ago, it was garbage city. And now everybody's going there to the breweries, to the wineries. There's like an awesome kind of revitalization. And it's like, okay, that's that's, a lot of people attribute that to the current mayor, I believe Mayor Evans.
Yeah.
And he's stepping down and, you know, you have two, two great candidates for mayor in Garden City, at least. I think they're both great. It's like, one of them's gonna win. I think you have good options, but Indian Creek Plaza is the other example.
Yeah.
Where like, no one has said it is anything but an absolute home run. And that was something planned out, derived, and executed by the local government in Caldwell.
Yeah.
Talk to me about how you keep pushing and and, you know, forwarding, or excuse me, utilizing that momentum, keep the momentum of Indian Creek Plaza in the economy downtown.
Yeah, I I love Indian Creek Plaza. I go, I went to Indian Creek Festival. I go to everything that's almost downtown when I can.
Yeah.
And how you keep that momentum, right? You're like, okay, well, where are areas that we can invest in? I know that Caldwell is doing a lot with the North End. They call it Old Town or the Garden District, whomever you're talking about. It's on the other side of the train tracks. And one of the ways in which I believe you can do that, based on my understanding and my experiences, you find connectors, right? So Indian Creek ends on Fifth Street, basically. You have the police department and then it's, it starts this way. So going across this way, I know that there's a lot of feasibility studies happening right now and making that urban renewal district.
Sure.
And so what that means is that you're able to connect all of that amazing momentum from Indian Creek and push it towards the North End, right? And the amazing thing about Old Town, the Garden District, is that it's a traditional neighborhood. It's one of the last traditional neighborhoods in Caldwell, which means that you can have commercial, you can have multifamily, you can have single residential. You can have this plethora of possibilities. And I think that that is what is amazing. Is that if we're able to connect that, you know, it's not going to be another Indian Creek, but it's going to have its own identity. And the people in that area, I know, are going to cherish it just as much as they do Indian Creek. And so I think that that's how you build momentum, right? You get the people invested, hey, we we can do something amazing somewhere else in Caldwell. We can keep this going. We can have these boutique shops come in or these boutique meat or cheese, what have you. We can have apartments above retail, right? We can have this mix of of different people and different cultures and diversity just come in and add to the beauty of Caldwell. And I think that that's amazing. I think that that's one of the ways that they could do it.
When you talk about the beauty of Caldwell, a lot of people feel that the the culture and the beauty and the things they've always loved about Caldwell are kind of slipping away with growth.
Yeah.
But if you stop growth, that's not, that doesn't lead to, like, if you contract, like, if Caldwell started shedding residents, that's not good. Like, what happened to Detroit? Like, you don't want, you want houses and, you know, property to continue increasing in value to a degree. You don't want it to be runaway.
Exactly.
And, you know, again, you need, you need growth. Like, if we're not growing, we're dying, right? Like, that's, that's the idea. Or at least that's what most people articulate. How do you maintain Caldwell? And deal with the growth? Or what would you deal with the growth to attempt to maintain Caldwell?
Yeah. When it comes to growth, I think we need to be creative when it comes to how we're growing. A lot of the spaces in Caldwell in the actual city, I think that there are some amazing things that you can do. You can create these relationships with different developers and be like, hey, you know what? I know you usually specialize in city and regular, single residential, quarter acre lot.
Sure.
Three-bedroom, two-bath. What if we did some townhouses? Or what if we did some condos? I don't think there's, you can't get any condos in Caldwell. What do, how do we do that? How do we help the the individuals who are coming in who maybe need to rent for a year and they want to buy a house? How do we get them to own homeownership? Or the individuals who are looking to downsize? How do we get them from their four-bedroom, three-bath house, 35, 36 square foot to maybe 18 or 15? How do we get that? Maybe they don't want a big lawn. You know, and I think that that's, those are the creative solutions when it comes to growth and feeling in the different spots that we have available in the actual city rather than, you know, the urban sprawl. Because I think when you're able to do that, then you still have the identity of the farm, the agriculture, which is very, very prominent in Caldwell. But then you also have the diversity of the people coming in, the people that are wanting homeownership. I know I'm one of those people. I can't, I can't afford a $400,000, $500,000 home. I mean, I think that the median house this this year is $426,000 in Caldwell? Or in Canyon County? Like, that's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
Especially if you're a single person trying to survive. You know, it's like, how how do we, how do we do that?
Especially like 7% interest rate.
Exactly.
You can pull off 400 if it's 3%, or 2.5%, like, no problem, man.
7%, that's a lot of money. And then, then you're being outbid. And it's like, how do you, how do you find that? And so I think that those are the, those are the solutions when it comes to growth and making sure that we're keeping our identity. I think that that's really important.
And essentially, so it sounds like you're saying, look, provide a varied product. Have, don't just go for the four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath that, you know, like, a lot of people.
Yeah.
You know, like, I got three kids. It's like, I need the four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, right? And like, me, my wife, my kids, like, fine. But that's not ever, you have people graduating from high school, graduating from college. You have single individuals that are professionals that are living here. Like, you have a lot of different needs. And like, it's interesting how many people have acknowledged, like, look, man, not everybody wants a lawn. Like, come on. And it's like, yeah, I could see that. You know, like, when I had my first spot when I was younger in my twenties and had this like little grass patch. And I'm like, I don't even want to mow it. Like, I like that it exists. I got a gardener. I got a gardener for like, it was, dude, I'm telling you, right, it was like 500 square feet. It was so, I was, I was working seven days a week, so I justified it. I was like, I don't have time for a lawn.
Exactly.
But it was literally 500 square feet lawn. And I was like, this is ridiculous. And I'm like, I, but, you know, in your early twenties, like, I don't need upkeep. Like, I need a beer and a tomato plant.
Exactly. You want a little garden. Maybe that's it.
Dude, I grew these heirloom tomatoes. So I grew so many of them that literally, like, by the end of season, like, I can't eat anymore. And they rotted on them. I felt so bad. I'm like, there's food right there. And I'm like, I'm too tired. I can't eat it. And it was like this giant, it's like, oh, I feel like a terrible person. But yeah, like, I wanted a tiny little garden and, you know, a place for my Weber kettle barbecue.
Exactly. And you know, the other thing, the demands of life are different now. I mean, there, there's all the events happening in Indian Creek Plaza. There's something going on almost every weekend.
Something 280 events per year, which means like, four times during the week, they have like live bands or like pop-up things or whatever. It's like, how they managed that?
I know. I know. Danae, she's the, she's the executive director for Destination Caldwell.
Danae has got to be like, a team. Like, I need to understand what Danae does because her level of efficiency and like productivity. She needs like a state award. Like, Danae, you done did it.
No, she does need a state award because the the amount of collaboration it takes to, you know, you're building those relationships. And and that's one thing that I love about this experience, going through this campaign, is creating those relationships with people and not just, you know, nonprofits, but, you know, different organizations, different associations. Like, how are we going to work together to make sure that Caldwell is going into a beautiful future? How do we do that? Because it's only through collaboration and bridge building that you're able to do that.
Right.
You know, and so, yeah, but when it comes to housing, I mean, people are so busy. They have so much going on, different lives. People want to travel now. They don't just want to stay home. A lot of times, they just want to go sleep and then go to the next thing, you know. So, yeah, it's those creative solutions and those collaborations with everyone that I think is gonna help us get forward.
Talk to me about fundamental services, law enforcement.
Yeah.
Law enforcement is, you know, in Caldwell, it's a hot topic for a number of reasons. First, you know, I had Councilman Stoddick in here and he was like, listen, we have dropped, dropped crime. With the exception of, I think, car theft and rape. And it's like, those are dark things. But he was like, listen, how are you going to stop somebody from doing those things? He's like, but everything else, like, we have dropped in crimes.
It's true.
Like considerably. There's also some people that, you know, have friction with law enforcement in Caldwell. Talk to me about the state of law enforcement in Caldwell.
Yeah, I think, I think the councilman, he's right. I mean, based on the numbers, and I was able to go to an open forum for the police and see all of their tactical gear and their drones and everything. And I meet the horses.
The horses.
The horses are amazing. But, you know, I I agree with him that they are down. And, you know, I mean, maybe through education and you know, when you talk about car thieves, it's okay, are they, are they kids that have, are from Caldwell or are they people?
Coming into Caldwell.
Like, what are those statistics? Because one thing that that I believe is that you have to teach a younger generation to trust law enforcement.
Sure.
And that's one of the things that I think that they do very well in Caldwell, especially now that they have the mounted, the mounted policemen. They are at almost every outdoor event. And people can go and they can connect with the horsemen's and or the horse police officers and the, well, are they both police officers?
I think they are, because if
Like the dogs.
I was just gonna say, like, if you kick a dog in the airport because you're like transporting drugs, you've assaulted a police officer.
So, so both of the police officers.
Yeah.
You know,
Agents, the law enforcement agents.
The law enforcement agents, you know, so many kids go up to that. And it's when you build that trust with community that hopefully, you know, you can possibly stop that type of behavior outside of, you know, traffic and all that other stuff. But
You also realize how horrifying it would be to be in the movie Braveheart, when they have like the mounted, you know, they're like, oh, you're way up there. And they have like some fucking
Oh, I know, I know.
Battle axe or sword. And you're like, oh, this is why mounted cavalry is like
No, I mean, I think of, every time I see those horses, I think of Lord of the Rings. I am a Lord of the Rings fan. I love Lord of the Rings.
Dude, what about The Hobbit? What a failed series.
I
Oh, gosh.
I was disappointed. Here's the thing. I, I, I love the original
Yeah.
Lord of the Rings.
Yeah, yeah.
I love all of them. The Hobbit, I don't know why they use so much CGI.
Because it was, it was literally like when they read the Star Wars movies. They're like, oh, we have this tool. We're going to use this tool. And then eventually, when they made Seven, Eight, Nine, they were like, okay, just take it back. Like, let's get back to the canon of this. They also made, they portrayed the elves as like these invincible characters. It was like, they got really weird with all, and they didn't give enough backstory to the friction between the dwarves and elves. Like, I just, and then the dragon, it was like, can you just do something else?
It's like, you just stole a necklace? Okay.
Yeah.
That's about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, the entrance of, of Harlem, though, was like, pretty good. They did a good enough job portraying that.
I think they did too. And I think they did well because it was, it was Andy Serkis, right? You know, he obviously played it in in the three of them. But I think, I think that that's what it was. I did like that that introduction. That's, it's pretty amazing.
So the horses, Chief Ingram on the horse, you're like, Lord of the Rings.
I mean, he's, he's basically Gandalf on the horses now. But no, I think that there is definitely, obviously, there's always areas of improvement. But I think that that the police officers are doing such a fantastic job. And, you know, them being able to be at these events and and show face and really, truly have the numbers associated with it, with what's happening and that type of transparency, I think, I think they're doing a fantastic job.
Great, great, great. We talked development, law enforcement, economics downtown, big projects. What are we missing? What are we missing?
When I talk to people, they talk about traffic.
Traffic, there it is. There it is. Yeah.
Talk about the roads.
The roads. This is a tricky one because you have like three different agencies you're dealing with.
Exactly.
You know, you have the city of Caldwell, you have ITD, you have highway districts, you have all kinds of things. And you have also complicating things or like, where, at what point do you stop using impact fees to pay for new things versus paying for things that already existed but are being impacted, but just outside the impact zone? Like, what do you do?
Okay, so you did too. So let's, let's talk about traffic and then we'll talk about impact.
Yeah, you go.
So traffic. So I think that, again, one of the ways in which we can engage with our citizens is having, I think it would be amazing, and I call it low-hanging fruit, is having an actual timeline of what's happening, when it's starting, and communicating that to the citizens. A lot of, I don't, I didn't even know they were doing traffic on 10th Street, honestly. And I live there. I'm, this is my life, trying to understand everything. And I didn't even know. You know, and it's like, okay, how are we going to let the citizenry know, hey, you know what? This is happening in your neighborhood at about 10, 15 minutes to your commute. Right? Because it's that communication, I believe, that's missing. And again, I think that that's something super easy that you can solve. You know, having a, having a list of all the projects that are happening, who the sponsor is, who the developer is, and who's in charge of it. Because a lot of times, like you said, no one wants to do a ton of research. No one wants to go through all of the documents and be like, okay, this, this organization is in charge of this. And then I have to go to this council meeting to understand the meeting minutes and understand what's happening here.
Right, right.
Right? So it's like, how do we, how do we get this information, make it palatable to our citizens and be like, hey, this is what's happening? This is how you, this is what you should be planning for. I think that's super simple. And I think that that's something that can happen tomorrow, right? It doesn't have to be this legislation or policy, whatever.
Sure, sure.
Right? It's just like having that. When it comes to impact fees, I think that it's very important that they are assessed often and that we're transparent about what is needed. One of the things associated with impact fees is if there's a deficiency, right? But that's where a capital plan comes in, a capital transportation plan. And one of the things that would help when developers come in is they can look at our capital plan. If they have this plot or whatever in this area, they'll know of the impact fees associated with that before. And I think that that's really important because that helps with planning. It helps the developer. It helps anyone looking at purchasing that type of development, as well as the transportation capital plan, right? So you have different roads, used stick or what have you, that need to be improved. And so what are we going to be? what are we going to be doing to make sure that we're transparent, that those are being put? Not, I don't want to say accurately, but, um, well, accurately, but also fairly, right? That it's not just one developer's paying a billion dollars.
Sure.
No one pays a billion dollars, but.
You gotta distribute the burden evenly.
Exactly.
Or appropriate, not evenly, but you have to distribute the burden, um, analogous to the impact. That's the whole nature of the impact fee study. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And so I think that that's really important, but you know, transportation or, you know, the roads. I, I think that just having a calendar and being like, hey, everyone, this is what's happening. I think that that, that a lot of people just want that communication when it comes to the city.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Listen, man, we've talked about a lot. It was great. We got through pretty, a lot of information. Um, is there anything you'd like to hit here at the end?
You know, I, I think that, that Caldwell is at such a place right now where the citizens are wanting to be heard. And they are wanting to make sure that those who are elected are a reflection of them. And so I know I can do that and I will try my best to always be a reflection of the citizens of Caldwell. And it'll be up to them to vote me in November, right? But I think that, that the doom and gloom isn't really for Caldwell. I think Caldwell has so much potential and there's so much promise for the future. So, yeah.
God, I like that positive sentiment.
Thank you.
Yeah. There is great stuff coming. There's great stuff happening now.
Yeah.
It's, uh, yeah, there is, there are a couple, so I, I don't consume a lot of social media. I usually just post and ghost and I, you know, post videos to, uh, the, the shows to a lot of different platforms and some of them, man, some of them are just, they're supposed to be locally oriented and all they are is this national insanity, one way or another.
Yeah.
Right? Either it's like the federal, the administration is great or it's the devil. Like, and there's no in between and it's all doom and gloom. It's not even localized. It has like, it's like, how does that affect your road? Like, what about around about? Like, you know, have all this, like, there are good things happening.
Yeah.
You know, and there are reasons to be optimistic. Not everything is perfect, but you know, focus locally. Focus on positive things. Focus on positive change and positive possibility. And I, I just really appreciate that you're saying that.
Absolutely. And you know, it's about serving, right? I grew up with the idea of, of being a productive member of society and what that means is, is okay, you know what? You're gonna have to sacrifice a little bit of yourself in order to help other people.
Right.
And I think that that because it's so ingrained in me, it's just second nature. Like, and so I find it weird that some people don't do that or don't think that way. You know, um, but yeah, that's what it's about. It's about serving. And that's why I'm running, because I want to serve the citizens of Caldwell. I want to make sure that no matter where you live, that I'm going to be advocating for you, whether it's in Sienna Hills or in the North End or over in Sky Ranch, you know, there's a lot of different issues depending on what neighborhood you live in. So it's like, okay, how am I gonna make sure that I'm representing everyone? And it's through that communication, but also through the hope that, you know, we'll get through this. We'll get through this and we'll be successful towards the end.
God bless you, sir. I love that. Carlos, I appreciate you. Thank you for running. Thanks for coming and talking about these priorities and, uh, good luck with your campaign.
Thank you so much.